This conference will now be recorded.
They can see that.
I'll call to order the regular September 3, 2024 council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. For all rise of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, motion to accept the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved is second.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Wagner.
Mayor Hilbar?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Counsel Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any presentations tonight? No mayor's report? Any council committee meeting reports tonight?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dale.
We had the Public Works Committee meeting last week, I think it was. Where did it go? Oh, it's over here. Basically, big items that we went had was Ben reported out to the Committee on the Streets Report, which I think we've already received. But Robert reported out on the Knox Street and State Avenue projects. And interesting discussions, price tags, preliminary price tags. The committee is going to be moving forward with looking into grant funding outside of the small city allotment grants. Going to look into that bigger picture to see just what the requirements are going to be, the funding mechanisms that we can maybe tackle these two street improvement projects. And of course, I think everybody's in agreement, state avenues to the first here, so.
Did they have a price tag on that one, Dale?
1.3 million.
1.3. What about Knox Street?
I think it was similar, 1.3.
A lot similar.
Although Knox Street's a little different, the majority of the money on it is going to be a water main improvement.
Yeah.
So.
That upsides that.
So a little bit of different pot of money there involved, so. Anyhow, yeah.
Thank you. Yep. You don't have anything, so. Moving right along, topics on the floor. It's like we have.
I have three.
Three.
First is Mark. Bizar?
Bizar, oh, yeah.
Oh.
Now, Mark, if you want to come up to the dais here, just state your name. You don't have to give your address. Just state your name for the record.
Bizar. Hi there. Yeah, so there's a lot of, I guess, chatter, talk, probably misinformation, disinformation about what's going on with potentially a homeless shelter or homeless camp here in city or around about the city. And I was just asking, I guess, first of all, is that happening? And then from there would be, you know, a lot of other questions. But if it's simple, then it's going to be a short discussion.
It's no.
Love it.
It's just a rumor.
Okay.
I think, and I've seen some of the social media comments, and so, go ahead, Josette.
It was a rumor that started as like half-truth, right? Because before the Supreme Court ruled on the Grants Pass decision, cities were trying to figure out, okay, what does this mean for us? They're at the Supreme Court, Grants Pass got knocked back on what they wanted to do, which was not let people camp like in front of City Hall and places like that. So they had talked to us about potentially cities or jurisdictions were going to have to find a right-to-rest area. So when I kicked them off the front lawn of City Hall, I needed a place where they could go for 24 hours. So council had one preliminary discussion before the Supreme Court ruling, and we were trying to identify areas that could be driven by the police, had cover and not cover for like, if it's an RV, we're asking to move to a site or a tent. We needed places where tents could be. But we talked about what was publicly owned in the city limits. Should that be the rule that comes down that we could use in that capacity? The one spot that came up was the old photo solution site, which is right next to the sewer headworks on California Avenue across the street from basically like the last apartment building. That was the site that we brought up in one council meeting as a potential. But then when Grants Pass won at the Supreme Court, cities are allowed now to tell people with some restrictions. We have to give 72 hours notice. We have to hold their belongings if, for 30 days if they have to move along and stuff like that, just some public process. But that's where we're at now.
So some good information would probably be had by researching the Grants Pass decision.
Yeah, and Scott did write an article, I think in the second paper of July. I want to say, or the first August paper. We wrote a big article. He came and interviewed me. We talked about all of this. It's in the Vernonia's Voice. But I think it got addressed and then got kind of rehashed in the community and came back up on the book of face. So we were all like, wait a sec, this is old news. This has already been settled, but people are not getting, the information isn't getting to everyone. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Get the action.
Yeah.
And we appreciate your concern.
Coming in concerned.
Appreciate it.
That's the best way.
Yeah.
To come to the City Hall and
And if you.
Meet with the city administrator or come to the council with any concern like that rather than social media.
And transparency is really important to councils, so they have a law that we follow, the staff, that they can't pass a new law without it being posted to the public for 10 days. So you guys are never going to have something that doesn't show up on our website for 10 full business days before they're voting on it. Unless it's an emergency, like a flood. Yeah, if it's flood, we might vote without getting your approval, but that's the only way. And staff is always available, 5291. You best can answer your questions or direct the information. Or get you the truth.
So were the other two participants with the same? Okay.
Okay. Jordan? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stay held hostage to the rest of the meeting if you'd like. Don't feel obligated. You can. We're more than welcome to have you.
Yeah.
But it's kind of boring.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for August 19, 2024.
No, you may make your announcement.
There is one correction that was brought to me by Counsel Wagner. I mistakenly quoted her as saying the guts felt cabbanae to be cleaned out. It was actually Counselor Norman. Uh huh. I was obviously in the wrong with my type of that. One correction. Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. So based on that, I would like to move to accept the consent agenda for approval with one correction, please.
Okay, so moved with the one correction.
I guess I'll second that.
Second by Counsel Webb.
Counsel Webb?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hilbar?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? No. Moving right into new business, Salmon Festival Special Event Permit. Page 34. Can't believe it's Salmon Festival already almost. So that'll be for October 5 from 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock. Dale?
Well, I just want to note that I do sit on the Salmon Festival Committee. No compensation or any way, so I already consulted. There's no conflict of interest, but I just wanted to declare that.
Okay.
Organization.
Okay, thank you, Dale.
So I need to declare that technically I have a vested interest in my, I have a child who is going to be a vendor. So I also can make a, any type of very objective decision, but just would like to announce that.
That's an actual conflict of interest.
She does not contribute to my household income, but she is a member of my family.
I don't know if it's really because she's not getting paid by them. It's hit or miss whether her product sells. She's just participating?
I would, I would.
Do potential.
Hey, I was going to say both counselors declare as a potential conflict.
Well, he has no conflict. Definitely not.
Okay.
Because there's, they don't pay him and he probably loses money.
Should it be probably a potential conflict and she can still vote?
Yep.
Yes, I will be objective.
So, well, I almost have a potential too, because I'm going to be giving carriage rides. Wagon rides, but.
For free?
I'm not.
For free.
Yeah, for free.
Yeah. Not taking any money?
No donations?
No.
Okay.
You didn't last, you didn't take donations last time.
Yeah, I did. I had a donation can, but.
So we have to defer till the next meeting for this one then? Oh, because we only have. Two. Two. Well, okay, so you're going to declare an actual conflict of interest, recuse yourself from the discussion. And I believe it's the majority of those present, so it would be you two. Yeah. So. You guys made this messy for me this.
So.
Well. It was a test.
I'm.
Yeah. Because you could potentially.
Benefit.
Benefit. I think it's just going to be boilerplate.
I don't have a business license.
It doesn't matter. You're taking money.
Okay.
That means you actually will be impacted financially by this decision. So you're going to. Pro or negative. Yeah. Yeah. You might lose money. Yeah, so you'll declare an actual conflict of interest, do not participate in the discussion or passing of it just for this part. And then they'll discuss and make the decision.
So they can approve tonight?
Yeah.
Just two of them? Okay. Well, I will, I will officially declare a conflict of interest with my service with my tractor and wagon. So I'll leave it to the other council members.
That's up to you now.
Yeah, I guess it's my vote now.
Do you want me to give you a little, this is the exact same request that we have asked for in previous years. So they're not asking for anything different. And then I do think they turned in layout, the beer garden, and then they did request to close Park Drive in the morning. Just for, yeah, emergency vehicles and disabled handicap parkers will still be able to get in, but general traffic will stay out so that it's not dangerous for all the kids and fishermen and.
So if they are requesting it for also persons who are handicapped to have access, it doesn't say that on their application?
No, but they don't fully block the road and they have handicap signs that go up where people can hand park. So we've never had anybody not just come down the road if they're a disabled driver. I don't know that we have, say it gets really popular, Susan, I don't know that we have enough to have every disabled driver.
Right.
So I don't, that's why in the past, it's not been like a posted thing. It's just been a known.
Okay.
Like if someone comes to us or someone comes to the people at the entrance and says, I have a mom and she uses a walker, and then they go, go on in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I know. I just was wondering, did we need to say that?
Yeah, I didn't used to say it in mine because it wasn't going to be like a regulated. But you could always push it back to them.
And then they said, no one's on the line?
Not from the scripts that I'm aware of.
No, is there someone online right now?
Yeah. Can you ask him? Is anybody online that is from this group that would like to present on it? Or Crooked Creek Brewery? No. There's a lot of aliases, alliances. Oh, okay. So they thought that one of the members of Crooked Creek was going to be, is that, am I saying it right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But they filled out their OLCC permit. And because they're a new vendor, it goes to council. Once they have one year of no new vendor, as long as it follows all the rules, we just don't bring it to you. But since it was a new person.
So.
They have no violations at OLCC either.
As far as our police review it or?
Yeah, Sean knows. We've looked at the site map and everything. But yeah, they always have to come to you if we haven't had them as a vendor before.
So just a quick question. And I know we've seen these all before. Section 2 is the recommendation to be completed by local government. Is there a reason that wasn't done prior to that coming to us?
Yeah, because unless you guys do it, I don't, we don't fill anything out on it. Until it's approved by you upon their.
This goes back to.
OLCC.
Yeah.
They just had to have it all filled out.
So this isn't for us as much as it is for.
It's for you appro, the paperwork's for OLCC, the approval is for you. Yeah.
So we're.
For clarification.
And I'm not going to participate in it. We're, we're just doing the Salmon Festival permit right now.
But they can do all three at once if they would like. We're talking about everything, right. We were just discussing all the items that were from Salmon Festival. You're correct. We're first talking about the special event permit.
So I could vote, I could vote on the OLCC permit.
Yeah.
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 So.
Yeah, so special event permit. Do you have any other questions on that?
Right now.
Any other questions on the special event permit? It's going to be great. Everyone should show up.
Are we in the scare for this?
I don't know. I'm going to the beach.
Yeah.
My first year in 20 years, I'm not running it, Susan. I don't know if they're, I believe they're doing all the same traditional things. And more.
So your motion, Salmon Festival Special Event Permit?
I move to approve the Salmon Festival Special Event Permit presented by the Vernonia Water Shield Council.
Okay.
I guess I'll have to second that.
Counsel Webb?
I guess it's an aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hilbar abstains. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Now, B, Salmon Festival OLCC application. Page 5 and 8. I think I had one question. I looked at the timeframe during the festival itself. It said October 5, 10 to 5. So that's after 5 o'clock is.
Yeah.
Shut down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, they have the temporary street closure till 6, but that's because just loading and unloading.
Oh, okay.
Regular traffic back in there before they get everything out.
Okay.
Yeah. But the other two times matched.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Good answer.
I'm good with it.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve the OLCC application?
I'll move if we approve the Salmon Festival OLCC location for, that's a safe.
Creek Brewing, I think.
For the beer brewing.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Counsel Wagner.
Mayor Hilbar?
Aye. Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And moving right into the Salmon Festival Street Closure Request at the Park Avenue. So. Yep, we have. I do have one question though. Will the contractor be that far with his work during the Salmon Festival down Park Avenue?
Yeah, so the only thing, we've been keeping tabs at that, his goal is to be through the park by the time of Salmon Festival. Should he have anything open, it will just be covered with steel plate.
Okay.
But he wants to get through it as quick as he can.
Yeah.
The park area because it's just kind of a nightmare. Once he gets into wellers properties, there's not really the public problem.
Okay.
Of the public. But yeah, we are keeping tabs on it. I keep telling him, it's this many days till October 5, and he's like, he really wants to get through there.
Definitely. Okay, that was just my only question.
Yeah, if he is not through there yet, he will make it right to do whatever so they can still not be affected.
Good. Any other questions on the street closure?
I move to approve the Salmon Festival Street Closure Request.
So moved. Your second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel Webb.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Counsel Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hilbar?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving right along, business from the departments. Okay, ordinances and resolutions, any correspondence. City Administrator.
Okay, so the ODF and W Docs, I put a call into Topper to see, are we still looking mid-September for the new docs to come? I didn't get an answer back. Or are we, I just wanted to gauge how far they are in the construction. But hopefully I'll get an answer for you guys. We had preliminary discussions with Brown Contracting, which is the contractor that won the bid for the ODOT ADA Ramp Projects and Rainier Vernonia, Forest Grove, Gaston. And so they're wanting to site a little concrete-making plant at the old Pinecone Lot. Once Bretton Hour is out of there with all their rock, they want to stage there for the middle ground. They're looking to come to us in March, but if they push through Rainier, they may come to us earlier than that. I don't know how they're going to do all the concrete building in the dead of winter up here, but that's on them. So that's where we're at with that. Louisiana North-South Connection Peel Excavating is starting this week, putting the new main in. We are experiencing a little issue with 3/4 inch minus. Oak Ranch went down to two days, and now they're telling us they're going to stop producing 3/4 inch minus. We still need 10,000 cubic yards of it for these two projects we have for all the pipe bedding. So I called our Vernonia guy, Tony Hyde, and I said, hey, Tony, you're so pro Vernonia. So he's digging into whether or not, what's, why are they doing it? Could they produce the rock and just stockpile it there and distribute, or are we just out of luck? Our concern is the mobilization and trucking costs that it's going to increase our project costs. And so potentially we would have change orders that have to cover that. So that's something going on with these two projects because there's a lot of pipe that needs to be bedded in 3/4 inch minus because inch and a half is not the right material. And with sewer isn't such a big deal. If you use it for fill, but it, but if you use it on water, it could puncture. And we get back into the water lines enough that we don't want that. So the police department union negotiations, we sent the proposed changes to legal. Legal sent back a change, so I'll be track changing that and sending it back to the union to review. So that's where we're at with that. Um, this project, the springboard project is on schedule. The work, in-water work is complete. Spence, it's all passed.
Oh.
You're good.
Started six months earlier. Oh.
They started early. We, we like you and care about you, but it passed.
Okay, great. I thought it was going to be.
You don't have to stay.
Okay. All the other things started temporary.
Everything.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So the new bridge spans are in. That was still yet to happen as of the time I wrote this report, and they, they anticipate crossing the highway next week. No, they're not getting to, they're getting to the highway this week, but not, they're still digging on Adams. What else? DQ permit. We completed the staff response. Oh, I didn't send it to you guys, did I? I was supposed to.
Yes.
Staff response. We sent that. I think I printed one for Counsel Webb because he was in my office. So they emailed us back that they received it. They're reviewing it, and then they'll, oh, it's feedback. The Eagle Scout Project, so we had a local Eagle Scout who is just about to turn 18. He has some learning disabilities. He's 18 now, but he wasn't.
18 yesterday.
Yeah. So he had to get his Eagle Scout project done. The project he presented that he could handle with his disabilities was removing invasive species from the library. So he did that. He ran a crew. They redid the beds. They removed all the stuff, so great project. So we thank Nathaniel for his hard work, and he's presenting to the Eagle Scout Board this next coming week. So hopefully they accept his project and he gets his merit badge or his Eagle Scout standing.
He, I just talked to him tonight.
Yeah.
And he's he's almost ready for his board review.
Okay, yeah.
Two more things to do, and then he'll.
Yeah.
Be ready for his board review, probably in another week, so.
Yeah.
He's pretty excited about it.
It'll be awesome. And then just that we have a council meeting on the 16th where you guys are going to bring any projects you want added to your council priority list because you're going to discuss those and make motions to add them for the rate ranking. And then Monday, the 7th and Monday, the 21st are your meetings in October. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Dale?
No.
No.
I was just talking to her.
He was in today already.
I want to recognize your efforts. Josette and I came and talked to you and Robert.
Yeah.
I got a chance, I went down and met Mike Lido one day and, and and it was right before we were finishing getting the old pipe out and stuff. And I asked, how's it going? And he said, man, Josette and Robert have been really great. So I want to commend you and public meeting.
Thanks.
You did a great job and, and they finished before their deadline, which was August 31, that phase of it, so.
Yeah, they're.
Good job.
They've had a lot of, the soils in Adams were a lot more waterlogged than could have been anticipated. So they had a lot of slumping happening in the clay, so they're ready to get to the highway and kind of be done with that river clay because it really made hard work for them.
So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
So. Okay. Items from the mayor and counselors. I have one thing. I, I think that the council knew and the staff knew that Counsel Norman and I have been working on a project on the new sign just south of town and welcoming people in the Vernonia that we wanted to replace the, the sign that Michael Snow built years ago and out of wood. And, and so Donald and I kind of took it upon themselves to, we met with Josette about a week ago and we, we figured out the best place to put it, and we kind of want to bring it out a little bit further and raise it up a little bit further. And so I had the idea of making a sign very similar out of metal that the, the sign that the freewillers. making a sign very similar out of metal that the, the sign that the freewillers did out on the highway. And so I got, went ahead and contacted Pacific Stainless Steel and, and Digital.
Graphics.
Graphics and Scappus. So they are presently making a mock-up for us to bring it.
For him to show you guys.
And, and so it'll be about an eight by 10. I already got kind of a bid, but we're, Digital Graphics does all the graphics to put on the metal. So when I, when I get a picture of it, I'll, I'll bring it to the council and present it. So plus we, we pretty much know where we want to put it, so we, we have to get a locate and everything. But that process is moving forward, so it's pretty exciting, so. It'll basically be similar to the sign out on the highway. But it'll say, there won't be a picture of the trestles, just trees, and just say, "Welcome to Vernonia" with the lettering that Michael Snow has out of the log lettering, so.
So similar, the trees won't be the up and down, it will be the background of trees.
It'll be.
The same log lettering type. So it's not changing very much, but it'll be a nice addition should you guys go for it and we figure out the money and.
Yeah. So, anyway. That's all I have. Anybody else? Dale?
I did a preliminary walkthrough on our plannings. Doing a lot better this year. Of what I walked through and counted, I think I was under 6.5% mortality this year. Which is quite a bit better and, you know, mainly on the younger, new stuff we planted. So the other trees are growing really good. And then the pine trees. I finally did, I found three dead ones. But those, last year in that area where we planted the fir in there, it was probably about 80% mortality on them. So they're doing pines, those Wilama Valley pine are going to do a lot better. So I think that's what we're going to get for this year. We need like 100 trees to fill in. Put a few, going to put a few up in Aura. We've lost a few and those poor little cedars trying to grow out in that hot sun, just are struggling. And I think those pine trees would do pretty good there and not look too bad, so.
Maybe we put cedars after the pines get up.
Well, yeah, and then they'll probably grow if you put them in shade. Regards to the light. Seen some online discussion about needing some more spots with fishing. We're going to help address that by moving the two old docks to shore, more on the backside. I did meet with West Oregon the other day for the siding for the locates, to put the anchors, they're going to put the anchors in. Mayor Hope Bart had contacted them, twisted their arm. And it sounds like they're going to donate their labor and the equipment, so. Hopefully, we'll keep chugging away at that. And then the chuckle of the day. We spent, well, we didn't, it was through the Watership Council, the takeout the old sewer pipe. Rock Creek, there, falls. And the whole goal of the project is to make these two little steps for juvenile salmonas can get up through there. I could go down there the other day. Rob Wilson had posted a picture online about it, but I'd already seen it. And people like to stack rocks. And people have already, the first falls, they've already went in there, just stacked it full of rocks in there. I'm like, okay, yeah, we didn't think about that one, but
Right.
it's, it's probably gone today because they let the dam out. And it, it's, it's nothing that's going to stop the little fish anyhow, but I just had to chuckle. And all this money, you open it up and then idle time in hands and we plug it back up. No big deal. But that looks good. Project turned out good.
Yeah. Dale, when, when is they going to put those anchors in, you know? Did.
Well, he called for the locate.
Oh.
And I walked down today and I didn't see any markings for anything yet. So I mean, the only thing is the city's infrastructure and.
And electric. It'd be water and electric back there.
Water and electric would be the only thing on ours and it should be on the opposite side of the dyke, but.
Well, and electric might be the only thing.
Right.
Because water just comes down as a spur, yeah.
Yeah, so. So anyhow, just a matter of getting the locate done.
Yeah.
He sounded like he'd do it this week, so.
Oh, good. Cool. Thank you, Dale. Is that it?
Yep.
Good. Good job. Okay, action, oh, Susan?
Um, just to tie into Aura, the Kinko is looking really good.
Yeah.
You know, I drive by periodically, well, more or less periodically, and it's, it's really taking off this summer.
Yeah.
So that's exciting to see.
It's good to see the leaves come back this.
I was worried about that.
It's scary when it's a stick in the winter, you're like.
The winter, uh-oh.
Yeah, it looks extremely healthy. I'm really pleased about that.
Okay, action items summary, Josette.
Okay, so I have that. My only thing is that I'm going to send you the staff response to the DEQ draft permit via email for review. See what they say.
And do you want to report on the letter that you and I wrote? And the, the return letter?
Oh. Sorry, I was like not following. So we did get a response back from IFA about the request to reassess our median household income thing. They said, "If you want to pay for your own study to be done, then you could prove it to us." So I contacted Business Oregon's person that does that and said, "Who are the appropriate third parties that can do that?" And she's been giving me stuff and I've been calling. So I'm going to get some prices and then come to council. And if it's under $10,000, we should do it because potentially it's going to save us up to $750,000.
Right.
So.
So.
And it's a scale, so you don't, you're just, you have to be below 70% of the median household income to get the full 750. But even if we're half of it, or we still, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars we can take in a grant versus financed on the rate, so I think it might be worth it. But I'm trying to figure out who will do it and who has the capacity to do it quickly for us and all that.
So if I could ask.
Yeah.
They use the PSU most recent?
No, they use the census.
So they use the census, really?
But they never responded with any, any data.
No, they didn't tell us, they told me what they used and the last five years. They said the 2024 one's going to be coming down from PSU supplements in the off-census years. That's good, there's some dated file that they're using that adds the PSU 2024 on and recalculates. That's the one we're going to want to say, "Hey, look, apples to apples and this person skewed it and all that." But yeah, they said it's the US Census data.
And I Googled the MHI for Vernonia, it was like 78,000. And statewide, it's like 80.
Yeah.
86.
The 78 was with that skew because typically we're more in the 60, high 60. We fluctuate, but not very much.
We've been able, we.
And you're.
In my capacity as assisting the city in the past, we've always been able to utilize the PSU number and use that because it is a, it is not fair to roll us into the Portland MSA and to use that calculation.
So.
And also the, the city itself.
Yeah.
And so we've always been able to skirt that, not skirt, utilize the data appropriately to be in our favor.
Well, what's funny is our conversation, while we'll have to hire our own study, has warranted them to discuss making one criteria for the next future rounds. So it won't happen for us, but it's going to happen for the future, so that's good. No.
Others being the pointy end of the stick is not so much fun.
It isn't, but if I can make it better for others, thumbs up.
Yes.
The next me will get the grant because, yeah, it'll already be just decided.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, we'll keep you posted.
Yeah. But I'm going to send you the draft DEQ responses, the only action item I have.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you, Josette.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else, so I guess we'll move into an adjournment. Well, thank you again for participating in council meeting and.
Thank you for coming.
And I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:12 PM. Meeting adjourned.